Hey guys.
Hello.
Hey.
Dorothea, do we know if Stacy is going to attend tonight?
I do not know.
Okay. So. The situation, Dave said he wasn't going to attend, so I talked to Dorothea and asked her to invite Stacy last week so that she'd have time to get up to speed. And I guess we don't know if Stacy is going to be here and active or not.
Is Mike Reynolds still an alternate?
He is also an alternate, so if Stacy's doesn't attend in my concern.
Mike's, Mike's pretty good. He comes to all the meetings, I think, right?
Yep. Yeah, I don't know if he is online.
Neither are online at this moment.
Okay. Hello, Mindy.
Good evening. So what were you all doing at 2:22 today on 222?
Probably in a meeting.
Not noticing.
Oh, not me either. I just thought of it.
That's actually a very good one. Check with me on March 3rd at 3:30 and I'll let you know what I was doing.
2033?
Yeah. I'm not seeing either of the alternates in the attendee or they haven't logged in. I know they received the notices.
All right, well, then, let's go ahead and open the meeting.
Uh, Mike Reynolds just started.
Perfect.
So Mr. Reynolds is here.
Okay. Well, it's, I think it may make sense to go ahead and open the meeting then.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to open the meeting tonight.
Yeah. I am. Oh, that's why I turned my, yeah. Second.
Okay, roll call. Board member Kichura. Member Shannon.
I.
Member Loda.
Yes.
Member Reynolds, you're actually serving tonight.
Mike is muted.
There it goes.
Got it unmuted.
Okay, member Reynolds.
Hi.
Chairperson Blaisstra.
Good, hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, so. So I guess first things first, our meeting virtually due to coronavirus pandemic. And notice of the meeting is on the Village website and anyone is welcome to attend. A link is on the Village website with information on how to attend. And we do have a few extra attendees. If any member of the public would like to speak, we do have an open public hearing. And we will ask for comments at an appropriate time. So the other matter is, member Dave Marshall said he would not be attending. And we have one of our alternates in attendance, Mike Reynolds. And so Mike will be serving tonight as an active member.
Thank you.
Sorry, you didn't get more notice, Mike.
That's fine. I was gonna be here anyway.
And you were in, you were attended the last meeting, is that correct?
Yes, I was.
Okay, so you are up to speed on this. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So the next matter, I guess, is what, I just want to talk to some of the board members about what we're gonna be doing today, given the late information that came in. I want to see what people's thoughts were. So we had some documents come in from the applicants from St. Louis Church today. And I certainly haven't read them and I doubt many people did read them. Normally, we need things to come in about a week before the meeting. And given the timing of things, I couldn't, it makes sense to have some relief from that since it's really a two weeks between our meetings. But I guess I just want to see what people's thoughts are as to what we should do.
I haven't seen any of the materials yet, so I'm not. I guess I just don't know, I'm just not able to ask questions, I guess, at this point.
Okay, so, so you haven't received them? Okay, and then the other question.
We were at 2:30 in the afternoon on a business day, so, I mean.
Yes, I was working too and I didn't have time to read any of these documents, so. I didn't know if anyone did or how many people received them. What about minutes? Did anyone have a chance to look at minutes that came out? Again, those came out today and I haven't read through them. But I had looked through a bunch of them previously.
I got them, but I didn't. Didn't know they were there and I checked this morning, nothing was there, so then I didn't check again and so I haven't read them, but I do have them.
Okay.
And me, and I have them too, but I haven't, I only read one set.
Okay, so we had minutes possibly on the agenda tonight. My suggestion then is that we defer minutes to another meeting. It could be either our next regular meeting or it could be our, we could have a special meeting should it be necessary. So one of the options we, we have tonight is since we got some leaked documents in today from St. Louis Church and not everyone has seen. Is we could just carry this over for, to a special meeting so we don't have to wait an entire month. And here at them, and we can give them an opportunity to present some information today as well. Since we do an open public hearing and we can solicit any public comments. How does that sound to everybody?
It sounds good to me.
Are there new materials on the website?
Materials are not on the website. So Dorothea has a copy of them, so if, they can be presented and shown on the screen so the public can see them. I mean, one of the concerns I've always had with stuff coming in late is not only do we not have a chance to see it, but the public doesn't have a chance to see it. And there's often adjacent property owners come in and they like to take a look at the Village website a few days before the meeting or a week before the meeting. Review everything and then base comments on it, or they may even choose not to attend the meeting based on what's on the website. So I think in the interest of getting public comments and board members time to review everything, it really helps to have things in sooner. But. But again, we had a shirt torn around between our meetings. So we do have the open public hearing. I think it makes sense to go ahead and let the applicant comment on on the open application and see what they have to say in response to some of our questions from last week. I can summarize where we left off last week. And let me pull up my list here. No, sorry, it wasn't last week, last meeting, which was about two weeks ago. Give me a second here, I gotta find my notes. Okay. So leftover open items from last month, we had, we were talking about noise acoustics. And there is a note that the new HVAC system proposed by St. Louis Church is gonna be louder than the old one. They had some documentation on it and it was noted by member Kichura that higher frequencies are gonna be even louder. And there is some questions about the significance of that. So that was one topic. And there was no resolution on that at the last meeting. Topic number two was there is discussion of alternative route for the ductwork. So it was not above ground and it would, more of it would be below ground. And if so, was there the possibility of eliminating the wall? So if the applicant had a chance to review that, they could comment on that. There is comments on the landscaping plan where the landscaping plan showed to us didn't have various species identified and was missing hydrangeas and and spirea and the orientation of the herb providing in the showing plan was not staggered. So there was the request to get an updated plan that was accurate. Then another topic that was left open from the last meeting was looking at having the base underneath the ductwork be gravel instead of concrete, so it was pervious to water. And there are general questions about the nature of the proposed solution and whether various alternatives were not viable. So often in the case when we're reviewing variances, we like to understand what alternatives may or may not be considered and hear from the applicant as to why they chose this particular solution and other possible alternatives don't make sense. And again, there can be a wide variety of rationale for that. So I think a general feeling from some people that I heard in the last meeting is they really wanted to know, why is this option the desired one? And if the applicant can hopefully address us to that. So those are the open issues. Any other board members have any additions to that or is that summarize it pretty well?
Good recap.
Yes, good.
Okay, so with that. What I'd like to do is hear from the applicant and then hear from any public comments. And before we start that, I do want to ask the clerk, did we receive any public comments at all via mail or email or phone calls or anything?
No, we have not. I would ask the applicant or anyone representing the applicant, please raise your hand so I can make sure I get the right people to allow them to speak.
Yes, so let's go ahead and we'll start with the applicant and then we'll let them address some of the outstanding concerns and then we will open it up to the public to provide any comments.
So. Okay, all right, can you still not hear?
No, we hear you.
No, wait a second.
So Sally was having trouble hearing or with her audio. She's on the cell phone, my cellphone right now, I don't.
There should be a dial-in on the website. So she doesn't have to connect via Zoom, she can connect just via a 1-800 number and a PIN code, which is available on our Village website.
Um, right, we'll try to find that.
I think, I think it's working, Sally. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hang up here, Sally, I think you're on.
Am I on? Can I hear you guys? We can hear you. I can't hear you though.
Oh, well, that's a problem.
Isn't that weird?
Oh, shoot, all right, yeah, all right. So I don't know if you heard John was saying that you can call in, Sally, do you want to try that? Okay, and just for the, for the board, the, so Damian Bell is, so unfortunately for me, he was, he was the one that did the acoustics report. And he was with our company when he did the report, he is no longer with our company, but he is graciously offered to join. And I think so if you're able to let Damian Bell in to the meeting, yeah.
And a Mark bag done?
Yeah, Mark, Mark is with La Bella too, he might just.
He raised his hand, so I let him in, so.
I didn't know Damian, if Damian's here, Damian should speak, he did the study, I was his boss at the time, so.
I promoted him, so hopefully he'll be coming in in a second here.
And then the, the only other one, Doug Breeze. He was, he's one of the engineers that worked on this. Is he on your list or?
I can move him over.
Sure.
Raise his hand, but I can bring him in, more than Mary.
I see Damian Bill listed as an attendee, not a panelist.
He should have moved over, so let me give him the, he's got to accept the link, so. Yep, he's coming in now. We have a full screen.
All right. So I guess, seeing as Damian, do you mind if we start with the acoustics piece of this? And I was hoping to maybe let Damian go after that point, but is that possible to?
It sounds reasonable to me. And just to summarize briefly what I recall from our last discussion. Casey, you had talked about the acoustics for this. It was noted that this is, the new system is gonna be about three to four decibels louder than the old system. And you stated that one of the differences between this system and the old system is this one has a variable speed fan. And so it, the sound levels at peak use and sound levels at typical use are gonna be different. So if it's not going full bore, it'll be a little bit quieter. So those, at least those are some of the facts that are recalled from last time. So with that said, let's go ahead and let Damian address whatever he would like to address regarding this.
Yeah, and if you want, can you give me control or the ability to share my screen? I can pull the report up for people to see it. Do I, do I have the capability?
I don't have a problem with that, Dorothea, can you?
You should be able to share now.
Okay.
It's page 24 of the mini packet, or page, begins on page 22.
You just have to find the report now. Here we go, okay, so Damian, hopefully, I, oh, all right, I'm sure, okay, so Damian, hopefully. I don't know if you're, that was enough, I could give a little more preface. So yes, I did say that the, the unit, the, the outdoor air handling unit has variable speed condenser fans and it has a modulating capacity capability. So, so the noise levels at night should be, well, will be less than during the day when it's running at full, you know, on a hot day when the sun is out. So that was part of that. The other piece that we talked about was the, the fact that road noise currently is, I thought this said 70 to 70 to 80 decibels. So I don't know, Damian, did are you in a place to go ahead and jump in and discuss some of the?
I think so. And everyone, hello, everyone, if you can hear my voice, acknowledge that.
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Yeah, on a high level, a three decibel increase is very minor. Most people wouldn't, wouldn't even notice it unless you told them that it had occurred. They would have to really attune their ears and try to pick out the fact that the sound level had gone up. Even, even if that happened over the course of a few minutes, you know. The state of New York, the DEC would call that a very minor almost non, non, not appreciable increase in sound level. So. It's, you know, when you get up to like a six decibel increase or a 10 decibel increase, that's when it becomes more noticeable to, to a community or a home, a resident. And to Casey's comment, I mean, there, there was constant traffic on that, on the road while I was there. You could barely hear the existing unit while you're standing out on the sidewalk. It's, it's not, it's just that it's a very hard to hear it if, unless you're, unless you're paying attention with, with the fairly heavy traffic on that road.
Does, does the model that you're presenting include all of the equipment that the perch intends to install?
It does, it does not include the ductwork, but it would include the compressor and the fan, the fans are dominant. The fans, I should say, are the dominant noise source. Now, the compressors are going to be enclosed and not a very dominant one, of course. So it includes, you know, the, when, when you look at that line there that says train Voyager 40 ton. That's the sound power, that's what's called the sound power level. Think of it like like the wattage on a light bulb. So if you have a 75 watt light bulb versus 100 watt light bulb. The, the 100 watt light bulb will cast light, you know, a brighter light at any given distance, right? But those levels might be somewhat misinterpreted, like that, that's, that's not the sound pressure level that you're hearing when you're standing next to the, the unit. All right. That's, that's like the total energy of that, of that of that unit. In terms of its acoustics, its acoustics energy. Those, those look, those numbers look very high, but that, that's, that's really a reflection of the amount of acoustic sound energy and then that dissipates as you go further and further away from the unit.
And it's directed upward, is that correct?
There is also a directivity factor, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so what you're saying is this model that you had here that these numbers are based on was for both the condenser unit and the air handler unit.
Yeah, the whole, the train Voyager 40 ton unit, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, Justin, just to clarify the, so the existing condition is condensing unit only. So, so this, that's this picture. And then there's an indoor air handling unit with the supply fan. So what our project does is it, it's putting the supply fan that moves the air into the space and the condensing unit all into one unit that will sit here, so.
So that, that does account for that change. You know, in current versus future. When you, when you say that the train Voyager has a certain sound power, it, it includes all of that, so. All right, I called it a compressor earlier, I meant to say condensing.
So one, one of the other questions, Damian, from, I think it was David, if, if I'm remembering right, but he so as an example, he asked, what would the sound difference be if, for someone on their porch on the other side, like the, the closest residence that is not the, I could pull up Google Maps here really quick, but the, the closest residence is, you know, a considerable distance still away, I think, the.
I, I went on just this afternoon and looked at it, it was 54 meters, was that 160 feet or something like that? The, the house directly across from the church.
Okay.
63 South Main. The green one. Or the white one on the other side, but.
On the 57 South Main, okay, yeah. I did a quick calculation. You know, if this unit, if, if the existing unit were running at full capacity like, like it was on the day that I visited. I calculated that its contribution is somewhere around 48, 47, 48 decibels, a weighted decibels. And that, the theoretical increase you, with the new unit, you get about 50 to 51 decibels. Both of those. You, you can go online and look at these, they call them noise thermometers, where you can look at different sound levels in the environment. I found one that was called quiet speech at three feet. So. It's not particularly, on an absolute level, it's not particularly perceived as being loud. And by the way, my calculation did, was very, was just a mathematical calculation, didn't, didn't account for like shrubbery and trees and things like that.
So I, I had one question on our, at our last meeting. And because, you know, your report references a weighting, right? Which is the weighted scale, I think, I think most closely align with like the perception of loudness to the human ear. But one of the questions I had was, so I think in the thousand and 2000, yeah, the thousand octave rate, for example, which is, you know, that's a, that's a, that's an audible, an audible octave. It was, it was higher. And I was just curious. Um, and I was just curious to understand, um, from you, you know, the expert, you know, those higher frequency, those higher frequencies, um, you know, did you think that's perceivable from, from, from somebody who's walking by? You know, especially at night when there's minimal car traffic?
It, it depends on the, on the listener. Um, high frequencies, say above two thousand hertz. Those will not, those will decay uh, much more quickly than low frequency. Thousand hertz is, is, is the most audible frequency, you know, that the human ear is attuned to, to, to detecting. So, uh, could, could someone with very good hearing and who was, uh, aware of the fact that this, this, this change had occurred, would they be able to hear it? Perhaps, you know. It's not outside the realm of possibility, but again, I'm talking, talking about most people who are not paying attention, they're just walking by. They're not, they're most likely not going to notice three decibel increase or.
Yeah, and I, I think one of the points that Damon, you were driving in the report was that the the road noise, I mean, during the day, that's, it's a, it's a pretty busy road. But even at night, I mean, there, I mean, if a, a car or truck is sound level, uh, you know, A-weighted, you're saying was seventy to eighty decibels, I mean, that's going to be prevalent over, I mean, if, I mean, just, uh, compare that, it's, uh,
Yeah, any, any given vehicle driving down that road is going to be significantly louder than the the unit, okay, instantaneously. Unit, if, if it were to be on for an hour or two into the, into the evening or past nine o'clock or so, it would be more of a steady background co-contribution, which once, you know, if people don't tend to notice things that are just kind of steady and not changing very much, you know, whereas they will notice a big truck driving by at, you know, one o'clock in the morning or something like that. So.
Any other questions from board members related to acoustics?
Yeah, I'm wondering, uh, we have a neighbor across the street who has a generator that, uh, runs itself for a half an hour every Saturday afternoon. And, uh, and I don't, I don't often notice it when it comes on, but I notice a big, a sudden big welcome relief when it goes off. And, uh, I'm thinking about the, the people at fifty-seven South Main and and how, and whether they would have to put up with an, an audible hum that, uh, that could be alleviated if, I'm wondering if you guys thought about a, a concrete, uh, a concrete block wall, uh, sound absorbing wall between the, between the unit and the, and the, uh, neighbors across.
Um, well, uh, yeah, we were, we were preferring the landscaping screening approach. Um, the I mean, the duct work has a wall which, so, I mean, this is the view right now, and just to give you a, this is the rendering of what that wall will be. That's hiding some of the ductwork, but the unit would be over here, if you can see my cursor. So, I, I think the issue with doing some type of large wall would be it would create more of an eyesore than visually, I think that would be problematic, and I, I would just bring it back to the fact that what Damian is saying is that this it, we can't say it's quieter than what's there now, because it's, it it wouldn't be when it's running at maximum capacity. However, at night, uh, it it, it probably will be quieter, so because of its ability to modulate capacity, so, um, and, and the fact that, you know, it's really a difficult thing to discern the difference from what's there now, so. So I guess, short of asking the fifty-seven South Main Street if, if the existing unit, if they notice it, or if it's a problem for them, I mean, that I think that would be the only one other thing that, you know, could be done to alleviate concern with that.
Let me share a thought here, is maybe how to remedy this, as I, I think the situation is, is known to be loud, or but we look at some numbers, but until you actually listen to it, you're not going to know if it's a problem. And I know some of the board members were concerned, wow, the, um, the frequencies are going to change and a loud sound at one frequency is different than a really shrill sound at another frequency, and without hearing it, we can't, uh, no one's going to know, but I think it's generally been accepted that the existing system isn't causing problems. And due to the modulation, uh, as was mentioned, where the fans are going to be slower in the evening, um, the conjecture is this might be better, but it's peak volume, or at least in the evening, but peak line during the day could be slightly worse. And what we're hearing is the amount worse is not likely to be that worse. Um, that's what I've been hearing. Now, I know we also have sections of our code that say things shall not be, uh, you, basically to the effect of you shall not create a nuisance for your neighbors. So, um, maybe where we could, um, leave this, and our attorney can weigh in on this, is that I believe the building inspector is fully authorized, if he starts getting complaints about noise to, if after this is built, to address it with the property owner. And if some kind of guarding or shielding, uh, needs to be put up to redirect it away from there, um, that could be an option. Um, Mindy, do you have any comments about that on uh, kind of resolving this by, um, leaving that an option to, for a building inspector to look into it in the future?
I think that is an option, and that the, uh, village code, um, just codifies what the existing common law is, which is that property owners are not permitted to use their property in a way that unreasonably interferes with a neighbor's use and enjoyment of their property. So, the, the issue would be in the future is if the noise were so loud or so persistent that it caused an unreasonable interference with somebody's use and enjoyment of a neighboring property, then both the code enforcement officer and the adjoining property owner, um, would be able to seek relief to abate the nuisance.
Thank you, Mindy. Okay, is there any other comments related to acoustics, or can we move on to next topic? Okay, um,
But I'll have a good evening.
Okay, thank you very much for your, um, for your comments. That's much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you, Damian.
You're welcome. Thank you, Casey. Bye, Mark. Bye, everybody.
Um, so let's go on to the topic of alternative routing of ducts, so that the duct work is all underground was something that, there was a question about that. And Casey was left to ponder that and see if that's viable, and if not, explain to us what, uh, what he thinks makes the most sense here. So, uh, Casey, by all means, go ahead and address the alternative duct routing discussion.
Sure, um, I don't, Sally, did you want, are you able to talk?
I, I think I am.
Okay, I don't know if you want to lead off here, uh.
Well, this, this document that, um, Casey has brought up is in regards to can we use the egress from the choir room, um, and put the duct through there? And that doorway is not large enough for the duct work to fit through it. And, uh, and also the ducts cannot be used as a point of egress. So that is, and, and that that had all been discussed, uh, early on in our research, and when it came up two weeks ago, I was a little rusty on, uh, the information. But, um, this is the choir office, which is an occupied space, and the present egress from that goes through that opening there and, and out. Um, and that's the doorway that's in the picture that I had. Um, that doorway is not large enough for the duct work. Um, and we really can't increase the size of the opening, because in the next picture down, you'll see that the, um, there are two foundations that run perpendicular there. So in order to open, make that opening larger, we'd be reconstructing major foundation areas. Um, so it's not a practical way to get it out. And then ultimately, we would still have to provide egress for the choir room, and, um, question had come up at the last meeting by David. Uh, couldn't that be, do double duty as duct work and egress? And first of all, the duct work would only be the half the size of the door, let's say, if it could fit through there. And there are two of it, the supply and the return. So, the effective opening is only two feet by five feet, which is clearly not suitable for egress. As well as the fact that you can't have people going into duct work and finding their way through it, and then getting back out again uh, by code. So that is why that routing was eliminated early on, um, in our research of, of how to, how to solve this problem. Um, so that does move us outside, um, it's proposed setting that we're talking about. And, uh, Justin, I think you wanted Casey to address, um, would the entire, both pieces of, both sections of duct work be below grade? So.
Yes, um, so in this drawing here, I believe what you're showing um, is you're talking about routing it through some of the existing building to the front, and you're stating as those, those rooms are in use and it interferes with egress and so on, which you stated at our last meeting. Um, now Dave isn't here tonight, but his question last time was basically in this drawing here, you're showing the duct work at the top of it. Um, no, about, go up, uh, so duct work, I believe, and his question was, can you reorient, uh, so have it go out of the building in the same location, but reorient the duct work, so it's deeper in the ground, so that it stays underground and, um, to the air handling unit, and then comes above ground, yeah, air handling unit. Rather than as it is right now, I believe you have, uh, the ducts coming, um, I can't remember the exact height, but I think the top of the uppermost one is going to be, what, about two and a half feet above ground or something to that effect?
Right, so right now, what we're calling for is one would be below grade and one would be above grade.
Okay, so, so that, so the question from last week from Dave was, can those be lowered? And, um, so that they're below grade, which would, uh, again, that would help with sound if it made any sound, but also it would not be visible, and the screening wall might not even be necessary in that case. So, we're hoping you could at least address to the board if you've looked into that and what your thoughts are on that.
Well, my first thought, being the property uh, manager for the last almost thirty years, is we've had continuous water problems, with water infiltrating that basement. Um, electrical conduits have been rotted away. Several projects have been undertaken to eliminate the infiltration as far back as the late nineties. Um, so my concern is, we already know there's a, a water table issue there. Why, why invite trouble, um, by putting something, um, that's far below grade, both for the benefit of the duct that we're talking about, and also the benefit of, um, causing further displacement of the water into the building. So that's my layperson take on it, um, and I'll let, uh, Casey, uh, maybe take a more technical approach.
Well, the, I mean, the concern with water level is the, the primary issue, I think, engineering-wise too, so, um, and, I mean, so this diagram shows, or this section view, I think, uh, the, the black is showing the, the proposed design. Uh, and then the red is, I mean, if you can follow the, it's fairly rudimentary, but the red rectangles here are intended to show, uh, a deeper, you know, the duct work turns uh, ninety degrees. Um, and it would be about, well, pretty much it would end up, uh, below grade at that point. So, I think this is as high as we can go with it, uh, keeping it so that duct work is below grade. So, I mean, the water level is number one. Uh, you know, really, I mean, there's an added cost to the excavation. Uh, you know, we're approximating that in the, the fifteen to thirty thousand dollar range.
How much is the new brick wall you're going to put up?
Well, um, yeah, I I don't know if I have that off, I don't have that off the top of my head, um. So you're right, it would, so your point would be it would offset the cost of the brick wall. However, if you go flush with grade, I mean, I was talking to one of our architects about this. The, there could be a concern, because if we go flush with grade, um, so in this plan, you would run into potential structural concerns of whether a vehicle could pass over that, um, you know, I, I mean, uh, obviously it probably wouldn't happen on purpose, but um, you know, you, you run into concerns such as that, um, lawnmower, whatever, equipment. So, I mean, that would add significantly more cost.
Are you saying, Casey, are you saying, excuse me, are you saying that you would then have to reinforce it sufficiently to allow for weight to be on top of it, such as putting up a scaffold or something like that?
Right, I mean, the knee wall offers a natural, uh, a more natural barrier to prevent against accidental heavy loading of a surface. If we put this down at grade, it does become easier for, uh, to have an incident where you had something heavy uh, pass on top of where the grading would be. So, um, so i-in that case, i-if you tried to protect against that, you would be looking at uh, significant structural, uh, strengthening, uh, for this, uh, cover level. So, I mean, that would be a significant cost, so. I mean, that would be a significant cost, so um. I mean, I I would, I would think that the retaining wall, I I'm trying to see. Have a cost estimate here, I I mean, if I had to guess at that, ten to fifteen thousand dollars. Is, I guess what my guess would be, so I guess the additional issue uh would be. Uh alright, so plumbing wise, we would end up needing to reroute the si- the sanitary sewer. Right now, the sanitary sewer runs out through this, well, it's it's below. Uh this is a a crawl space basement area. Um sanitary sewer is running below grade here, and it's passing out the front to the street, so. It's just by our estimation, I mean, we don't truly know the depth of that, and we won't until we dig. But uh from our estimation that. That sewer, sanitary sewer would and is right about there, which you would say, okay, the duck could stay above it. But you really want three to four feet of cover over the sanitary sewer for for freeze protection, so. We would recommend rerouting that as well, um so that's another fifteen thousand dollars, so. So there is added cost, um. Uh but but honestly, I I'm already nervous about the duct, you know, being at the level. The depth that it's at, um I mean, we are providing drainage to to prevent, to protect against that, but. Uh putting it deeper is not something that that I would want to do, and I would. Uh recommend not doing that.
How far do you have between the sewer pipe right now and the ductwork?
Yeah, it's, so this uh. This is the slope, that's the surface of the uh. Our our sloping bottom, concrete bottom of this area way. Um so that is roughly three feet, uh three feet down, so it's as best as we can estimate. You know, we really wouldn't wanna go much deeper uh with that surface without having to re. Relocate the sanitary sewer.
But i- is that bottom concrete, concrete pad that you're showing the slope, is that three to four feet away from the sewer pipe?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it, I mean, you can see that's four feet, uh I mean.
That's my problem, it's four feet, but the sewer pipe is a foot and eleven inches.
Yeah, I can, I just gotta get the scale here.
So my, I don't know, I don't know if that's the point you're getting at, Justin, is if it's still three to four feet?
Wonder, I was wondering what it is, I think that's, um I'm glad you brought that up, that wasn't something I had thought of as needing freeze protection, but that does make some sense.
So it's three feet?
So right now, it's three feet to the center line, so. We really wouldn't want to go to take the top of our, call it the floor of our area way. We wouldn't wanna go any deeper than that with it without relocating the sewer. There's a chance that it is. A little bit deeper, I I we don't think it would be shallower than that, but. Um so anyway, uh does that answer your question, David? Alright, I'm sorry, uh. Yes, or John, Justin, John, um. So that, those are the reasons why we don't wanna go deeper, uh. Looks like Steve has his hand raised, I don't know if that's on purpose.
Yes, I do, I I wanna make comment here because there's been a standing water problem with this property for many years. Um it's been engineered, uh Scott Harrier's been going through it because the grade of the road is above. The grade level of the front of the church, and there's been a water issue with this property for many years, and if you create a five-foot hole. Versus what they're planning on doing now, I think you're gonna, uh from an engineering standpoint, you'll probably confer with Scott Harrier too, but. Uh Mr. Corby went through this for years, they're trying to figure out how to uh address the issue, but there's always standing water. On the front of this property from the roadway, and if you create a five-foot hole in there. You're you're taking a chance on creating a larger problem that already exists, and they've been scratching their heads for years to try and alleviate.
They're digging a hole now, right?
Yeah.
A two and a half foot hole, I think, is that right, Casey?
Well, uh y- yeah, we are, w- we are digging a hole, uh so if I go back to this. Uh the area way, but it it is shallower than uh. Um than the depth of the area way, um. Where the outside air intake is and for this access hat or the access area for the. Uh the existing egress for the choir area, so um I don't know, I. I really. I wouldn't wanna put ductwork in a larger, deeper uh area way is what, I mean. I don't know if that's. I mean, you're right, that this this existing area way is this deep now, um it has drainage at the bottom of it, but.
So there is a drain, an existing drain at the bottom of that um area way, which everything else would slope into.
Do you currently, we're not. Does that current drain have enough capacity to handle the water you collect today? Cause it looks like even by your picture, you're still gonna dig a hole down two and a half, three feet, and you're gonna slope even more surface area down towards that. Existing drain, so if you currently have water problems, is this gonna exacerbate that?
They don't, they they don't currently have a water problem with the existing drain, they have a qu- water issue with the roadway to the property. And if you were to create a larger volume hole. You could create a larger problem on a property, it isn't a problem for the drain that exists today. But creating a five-foot hole versus, a- and actually be more than five foot because you gotta go below the. The surface, you probably have to go down almost six feet, I would believe, to to get space from those ductwork. To not be sitting on the ground, you don't wanna sit in the ground, it has to be raised up, so. I mean, the volume, the pure volume of the hole would be uh over twice. More than double of what it will be in the two and a half foot hole.
Oh, that that wasn't what I was getting at, I was just asking if it would have the capacity for the current drawing as it's today, which has a two and a half, three foot hole.
Yeah, this 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 area way doesn't change, uh so. So right, this is the existing area way here, that one. Uh well, actually, we're, we are getting, take that back, we are bumping it out towards the road slightly. Um so it does increase slightly, it's, I mean, this spot that says metal plate. Um I mean, we do think that that drain, I mean, it, yeah, it does drain now. Um and then the rest of the, wh- when we create this. Rest of the area way, it's gonna slope in this direction towards a drain that's uh over here on this access hatch. So, I don't know, I. A- and to my knowledge, that one does drain now also, but. I really don't wanna take the chance of uh putting all of this duct even deeper. And having even a one-day event that could submerge it, I mean, that, that would be. I don't know, I I feel like the deeper we go, the more risk uh there is of that occurring, so.
Now, the the bottom of this, I mean, one of the other comments was looking at gravel, and maybe you're answering that as it is now. You're designing this to accept water from the outside, slope it away from the building down towards. Uh this image, it's gonna be the the bottom, because what you're doing is you're putting in a wall. You're putting in the ductwork and underneath the ductwork, as proposed, was gonna be a concrete floor that's pitched. Towards the drainage system, so whatever water came in would be pitched away from there and go into the storm sewer. So it's actually getting rid of water from the building, and if you had a deeper, get rid of even more water from the building. Um it would seem to think to me, but uh it unless it clogged, in which case, then there'd be problems. Um but anyway.
Well, it, yeah, so Justin, just the um, so right now, um. Yeah, we have this scupper drain uh that drains into this existing. Uh. Area way. Um. And I believe that this is pumped out into the existing storm sewer, so I don't know, I. I think it ends up, if we. If we go deeper than that. I think, so now we're talking about having a, w- we can no longer drain to that existing floor drain. I think we'd be adding even more expense to try to figure out a new pumping system. Uh to to pump that out, I, I mean.
Okay, so so what you're saying is the depth of the stormwater system you're tying into is likely higher than. The bottom of this trench that you're putting here, at least if you completely submerged the. Uh the mid ducts completely underground.
How? I'm sorry, you just said it was pumping now, if you're pumping it, does that matter?
Um.
Whether you're pumping an extra foot or not, is that a significant?
I would say yes, I mean, it's it's just the deeper we go, the more water. Is likely to fill into the area way, the harder it will be to drain, uh we'd be talking about additional. Uh larger, maybe backup pumping systems, um. So, I mean, right now, we would be draining into the existing egress, this floor drain. I believe does uh go into a something that is pumped into the. Um. Into the storm sewer, but just by going deeper with the whole area way, I think we're just inviting. I mean, we know it's not a great situation right now, we're making that a more difficult situation, it's very hard to predict, I mean. Um. So.
So the deeper you go, the more you're displacing water into um. Other parts of the building, other parts of the foundation as well, because if 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 the water. Like putting a. A brick in a bucket of water, uh it's going to raise the overall level in the bucket when you put something. A box of some kind, even a. It it will automatically raise the level of the groundwater because it has to go somewhere else.
So um I guess if we want to, I'll just leave as a comment to other board members. None of us are technical drainage experts here, um we do have the option, should have, i- i- if drainage is a big concern to people. And how this would impact uh drainage system, we do have the option of asking our engineer Scott Harder to comment on this. He might think this was fine, um or he may have another comment, I don't know what what he would have, but. Um presumably, Casey, you guys have looked at the drainage system as. It's right now, and you think it's gonna be adequately functional to get water into um your stormwater system. And it can handle the water that you've proposed right now, so I'm kinda, I'm almost wondering if both of these would cause a. Potentially cause drainage issues, so um so that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, no, I I think that's a good question, I mean, we have looked at it, we think it will work, what we have right now. Uh do I have some? You know, there. The floor drain could could get plugged up with debris, uh you could have a flood situation happen, I, it's. Um. I mean, it's hard for me to say that this is absolutely bulletproof the way it is right now, I, so. Uh. But.
But one of the, one of the reasons that you're constructing it so that it has two drains is for that exact reason, that there's. There's, so to speak, redundancy, backup, uh it's not just going into one drain. Um and again, that has to be maintained uh along with the maintenance on the um. Actual boilers and heating equipment. Would be required that the drains be maintained as well.
They're they're not new drains though, right, they're existing drains?
Right, this, yes, this is existing and.
Same with it.
Yeah, this, there's an existing one over here.
Yeah.
Um.
And and the black lines there are the drainage pipes, is that correct?
Yeah, these are the storm, storm drainage, so some of that's picking up uh roof leaders from the roof. Drainage, um and we're we're having to reroute a lot of that because we're concerned that. It could be in the way of the the new area way.
See, okay, so the the, now, I guess I'm not clear of the flow of water in here. I'm seeing these drains flowing towards the building.
That's correct, they double back and they go through the crawl space, and um then they. They actually um go out to Rand's place.
Oh, right, yeah, so the the flow, so if you're, Justin, if what you're asking is the flow of uh stormwater is actually. It's flowing this direction. Um. And it's going this way. And then it's flowing into. Back into the bu- into the building, and then this is an existing pipe that we drew in here, so the six-inch storm. E, that's an existing pipe, but this red line is just showing the extension of that. Uh and it's flowing in that direction out of the building. So this pipe is exposed in that crawl space area.
Okay, and that's existing, no, the black one is new, is that correct?
Yeah.
That five-inch pipe?
Correct, the the dark black is new, correct? But that's, it's really, we're rerouting existing storm pipes that are picking up the roof leaders uh right now, so this. So these, these two are downspouts um from the roof drainage from the church.
I guess what I'm confused at is why, what the arrows on those lines apparently showing water going towards the downspouts?
Oh, no, the, that's a, that's an a pipe increase, so it goes from four inch to to five inch.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and these arrows, I was just trying to kinda convey the sloping of the uh. The area way, uh I mean, it's sloping downward. I mean, it's sloping downward. Uh, so that, I mean, this scupper would allow that water to flow into this existing. So we have, I I mean, we we did verify the the area of this, call it floor area of the area way. And this existing floor drain is of adequate size for a rainfall event with this added uh, area. So, I mean, to that level, it's co-compliant, uh, and the sizing works, I just.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. You have two methods of draining, one is through that floor drain. Um, correct, and then the other is through that new pipe you're putting in that goes into the storm sewer. And the floor drain goes into the storm sewer by another mechanism?
Um, well, the actually, the draining of this part of the area way, this is the only method of drainage through this. Um, through the scupper to that existing floor drain. I mean, there is an existing. Go ahead, Sally.
It, so we're using two existing drains, the drain um. At the egress from the choir room. For the southernmost part, and the drain at the bottom of the current air intake opening.
Correct.
Both, they're both already connected to storm sewers.
Yeah, and that's, I guess I'm getting thrown off here by this, uh. Maybe because that's lower. Um. Yeah, so you're correct, Sally, that this, I mean, this is recessing downward. So it would also, I I guess the fact that we're sloping. This concrete bottom is sloping in this direction, I guess it would have to fill up to the point where. It poured into this lower, this is the lower outside air intake area way. That's existing now, if this is, is that making sense to people? So there's a floor drain here.
Right, because that's five or six foot down.
It, correct, right.
And the rest of it is a pad that slopes down to the.
Right, to this.
Drain down there, yep.
Right, to a scupper that goes through here.
That gets pumped out.
Right.
Okay, so that's the drain, that's the drains that we're using.
Okay, so so the the dual system, then basically what happens is that you go to that floor drain. And as you said, if it gets overcapacity and you get a pond in there. It, what's gonna overflow that wall right by your cursor and go into the drain over there.
Correct, yeah. And I guess, I, and I'm remembering here too, the, so the floor level, all right, so. So keep in mind that the mechanical room floor is about three feet lower. So the floor here, in this part of the building. Is uh, three feet lower than the floor over here, so this. Floor drain i- is three feet above. Where, I I mean roughly speaking, three feet above uh, this floor drain. So, I mean, that, if we go deeper, um. I mean, I I think that that. I I guess we're.
We go, if we go deeper in the ground. We would actually be below the level of that one drain, and therefore it would not work as a drain.
Right, I I guess we would ha- we would end up having, right, so that that's correct, and um. I guess we would need to add. Yeah, to make it work, and go, go ahead, Sally.
Go back to that other picture, the six um. The section, so, go over to the area way, where the two um. Nope, go to the left, the area way where it's going into the, so that, the drain at the bottom there. Is six foot down in the ground approximately. The other drain on the south end, because basement is not as deep there. Would actually be higher up by three feet, so it would only be three feet down. So basically, if you put the ductwork fully in the ground, you would be below the drain. And the drain would not be effective.
Yeah, but if you're already pumping, you just dig the drain deeper, I mean, if they're connecting to. To an existing, an existing line, I mean, that's, that's, I get your point, the water issue, I'm just saying, I.
That drain, the the south drain does not have a pump on it, it's, it's only drained by gravity.
Sorry, Casey just told me it's pumped out.
Yeah, I think, Sally, I thought.
That drain would be hard to drop since it's the egress opening, how do you drop the drain but still leave the egress opening viable?
I I I don't know.
And higher.
I I don't, I don't know, Steve, I I'm I'm not a structural engineer here, but I'm.
You'd have to completely re-engineer the egress opening in order to drop it, drain three foot farther in order to accommodate a five foot hole.
Okay, okay, all right, it, this is what it is.
So, um, what is the foundation level over there? He says three feet higher than the other one, and the last drawing you showed, it looked like. Um, can you go back to that last drawing? I'm just trying to understand here. So, if you look at where those ducts come out, they're basically where they're coming out is at the. Uh, is at the floor level in your mechanical room, correct?
Correct.
And then over there, it seems to be eleven feet down from the finished floor. But that looks like that's um, let's say, a little less than ten feet that from the ground.
Correct.
Okay, and then you're saying the other one is three feet higher, so right now, you're. It, what you show there is the the bottom of that, if I'm looking at the, at the very, at the left there. Where it says air trench minus four feet and five inches.
Yeah.
So, we're, I'm just understanding, where you're at right now is that's roughly um, three feet below grade. And you're saying the other room is three feet higher than the bottom of the mechanical room, so that would be. Um, at the level of minus eight in this dra- this diagram here. Which is um, about three and a half feet deeper than you currently are right now. So it sounds like, at least from what you think it is, it sounds like basically. You're. Um, the floor in there, in the other areas, is about three and a half feet below the bottom of that trench. That's really pretty strong, and maybe that's wrong, I don't know. Yeah, probably somewhere around where the sewer pipe is, because the sewer pipe runs underneath, was running underneath the bound. Uh, the floor and getting into the building.
No, that that's a good point, Justin, that this, we think that. This is the storm pipe that comes through the wall, so I think we figured out that that was. Uh. Very close to grade level i- in that uh. Uh. Crawl space uh, in the sanitary sewer was below grade, so, so I think you're right, that the grade level. Or that uh, it is somewhere in this neighborhood uh, as far as the egress.
But but higher than where you're showing that pipe, so.
Uh, right, it's gotta be above the sanitary pipe, but I I think it's. Probably below where the storm pipe is, because that, that is above floor level in the crawl space.
Okay, so so you're talking the floor level is somewhere between those two pipes. But awfully, but awfully close to where that, uh, that red line, that horizontal red line is.
Yeah, this little, I think it's probably close to where this, if I, just trying to signify the existing floor drain here. Uh. So, yes, I think that's correct.
Okay, so that that's the bottom of the bill, approximately, okay.
Yep. And I I think, I I mean. John's not, I I think he's correct, that you could, we could put a new floor drain out here. And we could pump it out, um. And I, I. I guess I did think that this existing one was pumped now, and uh. And Doug, correct me if you think, if you're on and wanna correct me on that, but um. I think adding a new floor drain, we'd be talking about. It it would add cost, it would make things more difficult, I mean, the the pumping, we'd have to look at. Possibly having a. A pump, a uh, an actual manhole out here to, with a a structure that would be below grade, and house another pump. To pump that up and out, so. Uh. Alright, we're adding a lot of difficulty, cost. And what's the benefit? I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, the benefit is to make the knee wall go away, it. I guess. Is the knee wall. Really that much of a problem, I, I don't know, um, so.
We, uh, okay, uh, Casey, I don't think it's come up previously, um, but that document that I prepared. That showed that the original church had. Actually had knee walls that went the width of the church, so um, this is. Uh, the floor plan from when the original condition of the church. Um, the original church um, did not have any stained glass windows facing South Main Street. Except for one very high up at the peak. Um, and because there were basically uh, continuous solid brick walls of great height. Um, a technique that they used to help break up the expanse was. Um, there were planters uh, with knee walls. Um, on the north end and the south end. Um, in two thousand one, uh, when the church was renovated. Stained glass windows were added um, in that area. And they are, you know, at at, from the inside, they're at, not at floor level, but they're at seating level. So that uh, people in those two chapels um, have the benefit of the stained glass windows. So it then became um. An actual blockage to have planters there with bushes that would then hide the windows. Both for the benefit of the people inside and the people uh, going by, you know, particularly at night when lights are lit and you. You can appreciate stained glass windows, so those two knee walls uh, were removed. Um, so that the plantings could then be put directly into the ground um, below the window. So the idea of a, a knee wall at the front of the church is, is not. That has been done before, I guess is what I'm trying to say, there's a history of it, it's a consistent architectural feature. With the way the church was originally built, um, and what you now see, um, Casey, if you scroll back just a little bit. So that we can see the tops of those pictures. So, um, you have pictures.
Sorry.
It, it doesn't wanna cooperate.
Uh, I'm trying to get it, oh, here we go.
And that's to go up. Go up to the top of the page. Alright, so this picture on the left is a picture, uh, you know, it's just a cell phone picture taken from the street without any zooming, okay? And the knee wall that is there, where the um, the leader, the downspout comes down, the green downspout. That's the current air intake, and that's the knee wall that's hiding it. And if you um, zoom a little bit, the one on the right, uh, is a, is a partial zoom to see, to show how um. I'd say inconspicuous it is, um, and if you go down the page there, um. Casey, uh, the picture on the left shows the north uh, knee wall that's around the area way on the north side, which. We're not, is not involved in this project, I'm just including it for reference, and uh, the picture on the right. Uh, you actually have to get right up to the bushes to see the knee wall. Um, and then just uh, for information, because someone asked uh, at the last meeting, what, what kind of grading would then be on the top? It would be something similar to this, which is sturdy enough that should um. Someone need, someone stand on it, either as a prankster or needs to stand on it for some um. Repair reason, it's it's strong enough um, that it does not create a hazard for someone to actually step on it. So I just uh, wanted to include that for the, the board, you know, perspective, that this is not a um. A totally new idea, that the original church was built with it, and I realize it's, it's going to bump out slightly more. But it's consistent with the history of the building.
And now, um, that, you're perfectly within your right to build a wall on your, your property, it sound like it's illegal. I think we're just basically listening to alternatives, and the aesthetic appearance of the wall, I think it's more for. Historic Preservation Board, but.
Right.
You know, I, uh, I've been listening to all this, and I'm just kinda perplexed, I know this is, there's a lot of challenges gone into this design. And I'm lis- uh, listening to this, and it's like, there's a lot of atypical things going on here. But an above-ground ductwork in the front yard is pretty darn atypical. Um, and likewise, putting your air conditioner unit in your front yard is not where we'd like to put it, now we understand. Is you only have a basement under part of the building, and there's lots of challenges here. And I know what I've, what I've heard is uh, from last meeting, is a lot of people, I think, are just concerned as to whether you did your due diligence here. In looking at this, and um, it's something, it's probably quite a few things. Um, and I guess the question for all the board members is, uh, where do we, where do we wanna go with this? Um, so, we've heard a bunch of comments from you. Um, does anyone have any additional questions regarding lowering the ductwork? I think we've heard commentary from the applicant. Um, you know, they had a few, they had concerns about drainage, they had concerns about the sewer line freezing, they had um. Uh, the, another concern they had was whether um. They'd want more or a person standing on the grate to possibly fall in, um, as opposed to having a barrier. And you mentioned you previously had a knee wall, those are some things that we've heard, um, is there anything new that anyone would like to ask? Okay, um, let's just move on through our list here, so we kinda just get through this. Um, the comment on. The base of this being gravel instead of concrete underneath the ductwork. I'm presuming you're gonna bring up this, uh, the concern of drainage. And you wanting to get the water away and in the stormwater system, is, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, and the comment we've heard from you and the building inspector is that there are a lot of water comes off the road. Uh, and I've, I've heard about this, and I've seen this, we get flooding on the sidewalks there, that is not fun this time of year. And um, the concern is that the whole water table in the front yard is too high, which is partially exacerbated by runoff from the road. Um, and I don't know what goes into that, um, but that's what we've heard, so you're in the situation. Being to remove water from the front yard, not using the front yard to actually be a place to drain water to.
Correct.
Okay.
It's recently, as recently as two years ago, um, Scott Harder, what you're, the village engineer, uh, was talking about installing pumps in our front yard to pump the runoff from the street back up to and have it enter the storm drains in the street. He was talking about installing and he drew plans to install pumps at each of our driveways to pump the water back into the street and into the storm drains into the street. So he would be a great resource to, um, talk further as you suggested earlier.
Yeah, I, I attended, uh, one of the meetings where he was talking about this subject, so I know, um, there's discussion of what to do about pounding on the sidewalks in front of your place and it brought up that the road level was raised at some point. And so that's created problems and then, uh, at least the meeting I attended, there wasn't a real resolution for what to do with it, but, uh, it was at least a statement of problems. And that's was, this is maybe a couple of years ago or something to that effect, so, um, yeah, so I know this is, there's problems here and I've heard about this. Um, let's, let's move on past the gravel then unless any, any, any board members have any comments related to gravel? Let's get to landscaping last year, um, there's another question of, of alternatives, again, this is a very atypical solution here, having HVAC equipment in the front yard, above-ground ductwork, and so, and so on. And I think there's a general question people had is, well, what else can you do? And we've heard a lot about from this. Routing the ductwork, with commentary we've heard is running the, the, the ductwork has to go in approximately where it is, because you have no room in the interior, uh, to route it other ways, we've heard comments from that. So, I guess, the, the couple, there's a couple of things mentioned in the last meeting. Um, as to, one was why the air handler is outside instead of in there, you said it's already cramped in the room. And there's also even a mention of mounting equipment on the roof, which I'm sure has its own set of challenges, so if you can just mention at, at least why you kind of ruled out some of these other things, I think that would be beneficial for us.
Sure, um, so we did do a, a study for the church, looking at, at different options. Uh, one of which, we did look at, uh, putting a, the same style, you know, would be replacing the condensing unit in kind, so. I, I think no matter which option, we're talking about having that existing configuration would remain with the condensing unit providing cooling to, to a unit. So, that this other option was looking at putting an air handling unit back in the basement in place of the existing air handling unit. A typical, uh, a, a more typical design for HVAC systems would be to use hot water, um, as opposed to a gas-fired appliance, I mean, right now, it's, it's a gas-fired. Uh, so it was, it was a custom unit sixty years ago. Uh, it would have to be a custom unit again to, to go that, that gas-fired approach. But as I was saying, the, the, we did not pursue the gas-fired approach because of the fact that it's a custom piece of equipment. That would, it would cost, it could be another quarter of a million dollars more than the, uh, existing uh, replacement cost. And, and if, I mean, going that way, gas furnaces typically have less of a, their lifespan would be reduced, I mean, it could be as short as fifteen years, I mean, that would be pretty short. But you've got all the same problems you'd have to deal with, that the church is trying to deal with now in fifteen years, on top of the fact that you lose a lot of the, the beneficial options of the packaged unit that we're talking about using, which has a capability to dehumidify, um, and it has some energy benefits in, uh, variable air volume, uh, and variable capacity, so. So we, when we did this, uh, study for the church, we very quickly ruled out going with a gas-fired uh, piece of equipment that would be essentially replacing exactly in kind with what is there now. The more common alternative that gets used is to use hot water, as I was saying, and that would require a boiler, and, and a separate air handling unit to go in, in its place, we did work up this, uh, as a quick, you know, this was not done, we didn't go to this level when we did our study. Now, we did this in the last week, um, we tried to put this together to fit things into the space. So, it, it basically, space is the main problem, we, we've got, right now, this is where the boilers are located, uh, that's in conflict with the outside air duct coming into the, the air handling unit, I mean, this is where the footprint of the air handling, air handling unit is right here. You know, the black hatching shows the maintenance clearance. And then what we have, uh, right now, we're implementing these variable air volume boxes. And the problem becomes, how do you get the ductwork can, to be able to connect to these variable air volume boxes that, so that's, the variable air volume boxes provide zone control, so there's added comfort. Uh, but they also back down, uh, when your space is not calling for uh, increased heating or cooling, they will close down and you save energy, so, but, uh, by slowing down your fan. So, uh, you need the space to be able to connect the ductwork to those, I mean, this one, we weren't able to, to connect the duct to, um, you know, I guess we've got issues here with ductwork uh, that, that is passing out into the, the sanctuary of the church that, uh, is in an unexcavated area, uh, so there's issues with connections of those pieces of duct. So, I mean, getting all of this to fit, uh, we're saying that we're not able to do it, so, I mean, so anyway.
And then you, You looked at it and the short answer is it don't fit with off-the-shelf hardware. And custom hardware is expensive and hard to maintain.
Short answer, yes.
Okay, I, I mean, I can accept that, so.
And the third reason is, looking to the future, as Casey mentioned, we don't wanna go through all this again in fifteen to twenty years, uh, or, so we're, we're looking at, if you build a custom system now and you have it brought in by the factory and they reassemble it, um, by factory workers inside, would, you have to do this again in, in fifteen to twenty years.
Well, I mean, I, I think that's a logical, um, rationale there of it don't fit and you would rather use off-the-shelf than custom, I totally get that. Um, I don't, if, uh, any other board members, comments along those lines? Okay, um, I mean, you briefly mentioned, um, rooftop units and I'm sure routing the ductwork and everything to that would make that completely a ridiculous project. Would that be a fair comment?
Ye- yes, um, I mean, we, we actually did talk about it, it, in our schematic study, but, um, I mean, just to give you a a little perspective here, I mean, it just, structurally, I, I don't know that it's possible structurally, you have to have access to the roof, I mean, if you're complaining about sound of something down on the ground, you know, the sound up on the roof is just gonna be a, a similar issue, um. So, there's many reasons that that was a non-starter for us.
Okay, um, I mean, I think I can accept that without needing to think, uh, too much about that, I, I can see that would present as challenges. Um, anyone else have any questions regarding that? Okay, um, so then I think the next topic we were at was landscaping. And I didn't hear any real concerns about the landscaping plan last time, other than the proposal different from the drawing that you sent to us. Um, so, I think that's where we were and, um, wanted to see where you're, where you're at here.
Okay, so this is a document that I prepared and the colored portion is actually a copy of the landscaping plan from two thousand and one, which was approved by the board as part of the church renovation. And what I'm showing here is, um, the removals of the plant material would be removed, um, in order to allow for the installation of the ductwork. Uh, we would also remove the planting material on the north side, um, so that when new, when the new plants are put in, the north side and the south side are gonna be in, of consistent size and age. Um, and then on the second page, um, I'm showing the different types of plant materials, um, and on the third page, there's actually a key. So, um, on the right-hand side, those circles represent the arborvitae. And presently, there are, um, twenty-five of them, they would be removed and, um, replaced with, with new plants. Um, the configuration changes slightly in order to allow for, for the bigger swoop of the equipment. Um, the burning bushes that are now directly in front of the windows would, would bump out farther uh, with the same, uh, bird's nest spruce, um, that are there now. And the same hydrangeas, um, at the center of the building, uh, there's a purple boxes. Um, there are four of them there, they're basically would go back in the same positions they're currently in. Um, and the hydrangea on the south end would just be worked in, um, along the sidewalk near the arborvitae. Um, so, and then the hostas, the daylilies, the daffodils would actually be, um, dug up and, um, replanted once the project was over, so, uh, calling for all the same plant material, just, uh, slightly, um, different configurations.
So there's another page here?
Um, yeah, that just is the, the key.
Oh, okay.
What the, what the different colors and shapes represent, uh, gives the name of the plant material, the Latin name and the common name. Um, the one column lists the size, um, this is just a typical, uh, plant material list, um, that would come with a drawing, so. Three feet, uh, four, uh, hydrangeas, three to four feet in height, um, as planted. Um, the arborvitae, um, I took this from the two thousand and one plan, that part of the arborvitae were six feet and part were four feet. Um, so it, it to not have it be, um, so strictly speaking, a, a fence row, um, but have it, uh, have some alternating height, um, for, um, appearance sake.
Okay, I'm glad to see you're able to, uh, do a sketch here, uh, I think this shows your intent a lot better than the last drawing, so thank you for working on that. Any members of the board have any, any comments about this? Okay, um, I'm not hearing any comments, so how about we open this up for any public comments that we may have and we'll go from there. Not sure if anyone's even online.
We, we do have one attendee, we did. We don't seem to have anybody in attendance anymore, though my screen is saying one, I'm not seeing anybody there. I have no comments to share.
Okay, Justin and I don't have anybody commenting, I don't have any hands raised, I didn't receive any emails or nothing.
Okay, um, so I guess question for everybody then is where, where are we going with this? The, I think our two options is we can act on this tonight, or poss- or we could follow up with the engineer, if anyone wants him to take a look at the drainage system and give us any comment. Um, and the engineer may, may completely agree with what they've, um, they've sent to us, or I don't know what he's going to say, so I, I shouldn't even try to speculate. Any comments from board members?
I, I'm indifferent, I, I don't think we sent it to the engineer, but.
Okay, um, I, I mean, I don't have a strong opinion on that either, that, um, I mean, I don't mind looking at it, but I know there are, LaBella is a capable company that's working on this. And it is their property, if there's any drainage problem, it's only gonna affect their property, uh, so our bigger concern is whether it impacts other properties. So, I mean, I can totally buy that.
So, uh, Justin?
Go ahead.
Yep, so I was just glad to hear that the problem on the sidewalk in front of, uh, St. Louis, especially at the driveways, um, uh, that everybody knows about and fears, um, in the winter time is not gonna be exacerbated, you know, by this project, so that was, that was important for me to hear.
Okay, good. Okay then, so, I guess another comment for, um, Mindy and so on is, is there, you, you had some concerns about the drawings? Uh, the landscape and drawing not being accurate, and I know it came in late, but it was presented to everybody, do you have any concerns about us moving forward with this?
No, I don't, um, Ms. Schrecker, you know, very clearly explained how they're using all the same plants with slightly di- different configurations from the two thousand and one approval. I don't, I don't see any reason to delve any deeper into that, especially with the submissions that she provided the board with.
Okay, thank you, and I haven't heard any concerns among the, um, board members, other than to make sure we actually capture what they're doing. Um, that was really, I think, the only concern, um, and again, this is functional. And for the applicant, one of the reasons why we'd like to have the description of what it's, what going to be is, if something comes up ten years, twenty years from now, we look back at these drawings and need to figure out what's going on, it's like, okay, what was approved and what's there? Uh, what did someone install on a weekend and so on, so that's why it's helpful to have these drawings to, um, show where it's gonna be. But anyway, um, if we're content with that, let's move on past landscaping. And it sounds like And it sounds like people think it's reasonable to act on this tonight. So they. I think we would start with the variance and. What we would go through is go through discussion of our findings. Before we get into that, do you want to take a short break? I would like to take a short break. Is that okay to take a five minute break?
Can you make a motion for that?
Sure, I'll make a motion. We take a five minute break.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Member Katura?
Yes.
Member Loda?
Yes.
Member Shannon?
Yes.
Member Reynolds?
Yes.
Chairperson Blister?
Yes.
Break and show me.
Okay, thank you. The other churches were were larger. Oh, we didn't record that, some of those prior comments.
Yep. That's fine. We do the best we can.
Okay, so all we said before the recording ended is it's exempt from Monroe County Planning Review and it's a take two seek direction. And to exempt from county planning due to nineteen ninety-four agreement. And then we're copping about whether this will create undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. So I guess that one table we had of compatibility with other churches I found significant. Any other thoughts that people have?
Would say. The. It will not create an undesirable change. In fact. It'll be barely discernible. The difference when this project is done will be barely discernible to the average villager. And. So it would not create an undesirable change.
So they're addressing the landscaping. So appearance wise. It's currently acceptable and the like, as you said. The appearance will be very similar after they do this, other than the addition of the wall.
That's right.
Okay, so 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 for A then, it sounds like. The lock coverage is is similar to or less than most other churches. The landscape. Thing is being accommodated to address appearance differently than how it looks now.
And Mike's point, right, that the increases is small. Compared to where it's currently at. I think that that's what. Mike's point was. Did I get that right? Right, their increase in lock coverage is actually insignificant.
Yeah, well, I guess we'll get to that one and see. Okay, so let's move on to B here. I don't really know what other options they have other than the lock this lock coverage. I I think basically what we've heard is. Any other alternatives are going to. First of all, the depth of the pipes, I don't think it makes any difference in lock coverage. And. Whether they moved the air handler inside or out, I don't think it's relevant to the. To the variance here. So I mean, I haven't really, they seem to have done their job of exploring alternatives. I haven't. And they ruled out other ones for custom technical reasons. So I I think I'm comfortable saying it cannot be achieved by another feasible method. Is everyone on board with that?
Yes.
And then I guess the main reasons would be cost and technical challenges.
Right.
Whether it's substantial, but.
I I don't think lock coverage is. For something else I wouldn't, but.
So maybe this is a question for attorney here. Should we be looking at the change in lock coverage, ten or point three percent, or should we be looking at the absolute one here where? I'm having issues with my internet connection, so I'm turning off my video. Hopefully you can still hear me.
Yes, I can hear.
Yeah. So the question is, are we looking at the change in lock coverage over existing? Or Mindy, should we be looking at the absolute number relative to what's required in the zoning code?
Yeah, it's really a loosey goosey standard. You can pick one.
Okay.
Okay, to look at the. The the increase over existing.
It seems reasonable. So the the increase over existing is not substantial. That's what we're saying. And because it's only whatever the number was, point three percent, just insert the number.
Right.
Yeah, I think Steve did the math. It was very.
Like point three percent. As far as D goes, the only. I think this makes sense to bring up the sound issue. And what are people's thoughts that we're ending up on this?
The proposal, as I heard it, it makes very little, in this indistinguishable difference. I think. Takes fifteen percent difference in in the level of light, for instance, to be perceptible. So. I don't think my comments earlier about the the neighbor's generator across the street. A new generator that was a little louder wouldn't wouldn't make any difference in that context.
So unfortunately, it's a winter and we can't hear what it sounds like now. What I understand is. It's sound now isn't bothering people. And it will be a little louder, but not. Not earth changing difference. And we heard from their sound engineer.
And and Justin, it also seems like it's going to be louder. During the times when the traffic is likely to be heavier. And I was happy to hear that it could, you know, kind of modulate. So in the evenings with less traffic, it wouldn't be as loud.
Yeah, I was, that that makes sense to me as well is that going to variable speed might be helpful.
Yep.
So maybe we can just say will not have an adverse effect. On the environmental conditions and just say seen noise report for on the applicant.
Sounds good. Justin, did we lose you? Anyone?
Oh, did he get kicked off?
Not by me.
Or neither me kicked off, I mean.
I know I'm disconnected. He he's gone.
Justin's in the village. We need to get him green light.
He he is gone. Well, at least you finished D. Do we want to give him a minute to come back in?
Sure.
Should we call him?
And see if I have his number.
I'm I'm calling him.
Oh, good.
Where are you? Oh. Okay, very good. Yep. Okay. Yep, yep. He. He said he'd be back in a couple couple of minutes. He had to restart his computer. From from Bouton.
I'm really looking forward to meeting in person at some point.
When was the last time we were in person? September? Now. Was it long ago?
Yes.
Wow.
December. We were in person in December.
Yes, for seventy-five minute.
Okay, you're right. You're right. Yeah, but Justin wasn't there. We're we're down one.
That's true.
Right. That's right.
Feel like I haven't seen anybody. Plus, it's been cold to know at least the house. Oh, Justin's an attendee. Can we?
Yep.
Add him?
Just looked for him there and.
Perfect.
We should pop into panelists in a second here.
Hello, everyone. Sorry, my computer wanted a nap. It's all better now. Did you, did we move on after I dropped off there?
They couldn't. They needed you.
Fearless leader.
Okay, so we're talking about environmental things and where we were at, I believe, was. We were accepting the testimony from our acoustics report that it wouldn't create an adverse environmental impact. The next one, whether this is self-created, I I guess the need to upgrade their system is self-created. But that we normally say that doesn't necessarily preclude granting an area variance.
I wonder if you could just mark that one not applicable.
I think they're all always all applicable.
Yeah, we have to at least acknowledge it and say something.
Yeah.
So we totally say it's self-created, but this alone doesn't preclude granting an area variance. I'm fine with that.
Yep, me too.
And whether this is the minimum necessary to provide relief. To me, I think we can just say it is the minimum necessary. And we've heard the applicant discuss why various alternatives are not viable options. And that satisfies our board's concerns. Does that sound reasonable enough to everybody?
Well done.
Okay, as far as the physical characteristics go, I think the primary one I've heard is there is no basement under the church. Most of the church and fitting mechanical equipment into the existing area is extremely challenging. And the proposal. Is what was identified as the best option to economically replace their HVAC system.
And I think you also heard from Casey that the roof was not a viable option.
Yes, due to due to location routing of pipes and ductwork and it also being an I worse ISO than. This location, I think.
And struck and it was structurally, I can't remember the word to use. It wasn't structurally sound to support the weight or something like that.
Okay, I was fine with all of his comments on that.
Okay. I just wanted to, we also talked about the roof, but.
All right, I don't think I have, anyone else have anything to add?
You may want to comment on the ongoing persistent drainage problems in the front yard and the street.
I guess what would we say about that? I'm thinking about it. Our main concern is whether it impacts other properties, not whether. We could we could state that there is ongoing. There's pre-existing or existing drainage issues relative to the roadway. And we understand the drainage is challenging. And the applicant has addressed our drainage concerns in their testimony.
Yeah, I was thinking about that in terms of the extensive discussion that we had about the possibility of putting some of the systems underground. Or deeper. And there was some concerns about how that could be managed without impacting the. The foundation and the structure. But if you don't think that it's. An important point, it doesn't need to go in.
Well, I mean, I think it is. All right, we can just add something to that effect in there that drainage is known to be challenging on this property. And alternative options. Would impair drainage and sewers and so on. That sounds good enough to me. So with that, if we scroll down, I think the next thing is just to vote on this, right? I guess conditions of approval. Does it make sense, Mindy, to talk anything related to sound about that being a condition of approval? I think our zoning code would fully allow the building inspector to. Take some action should he get some complaints and wouldn't need to come back to us.
Right, the conditions are usually something that you do, you know, like if. As a condition of the approval and what we're talking about now in terms of future noise would be something that arose after the approval. Which would be a code enforcement issue, not a. Not not a approval issue. Right?
Okay, so I don't see any conditions necessary then.
I don't need to.
Okay, I'll make a motion then that we approve the area variance for the reasons discussed.
Second.
Okay, member Katura? Member Loda?
Yes.
Member Reynolds?
Yes.
Member Shannon?
Yes.
Chairperson Blister?
Yes.
Motion passes.
You must have gotten some rest. Nobody's been a trustee tonight.
It might jinx me. I have a few motions left.
Waiting for my promotion.
Oh, boy. All right. Let me get the next one. Let me get the next one.
Okay, so we already discussed seeker and county planning review, so let's just scroll right on through down here to. The various findings. So they have applied for variances and were granted it. That's number one. Number two, the comp plan and LWRP, I just kind of think that's not applicable to an HVAC system upgrade.
At a church.
At a church, yes. Maybe we can go through these quickly. Vehicular traffic is not impacted by this proposal, so it's not applicable. Same thing for four, not applicable. It's not impacted by this project. Number five, uses is unchanged. Not applicable. Again, parking, loading and access, not applicable, unchanged. Adequacy of landscaping and screening.
Yes.
So yes, they submitted a plan and we basically believe in time it will. The proposed landscaping will functionally screen the proposed equipment and will look presumably quite similar to how it does today.
Right, it's the same type and variety of plants.
With respect to the screening, do you want to mention that the knee wall is historically similar to what existed in the past and how it's consistent and blends in with the structure?
Yes.
Well, the knee wall also provides screening of the mechanical equipment and is compatible with the building architecture. As a bulk break. Thank you, Mindy.
Right, and and it's a, you know, a kind of redesign of a of an original feature. The new wall.
Okay, moving on to number eight, no signage is proposed. And number nine, I believe no changes to lighting are proposed. Number 10. The sewers are unaffected by this. And is everyone content with their description that they've considered stormwater impacts? And have solved their stormwater issues. As well as can be expected in in their plans.
Yes.
Yeah.
Saying useful to me. Water supply is unchanged and sanitary sewer is unchanged, so I think 11 is not applicable. Same thing with 12, not applicable. They're not changing waste and trash management. And number 13, they're not changing snow removal plans, so it's not applicable. Number 14. I think it will not impact health, safety and welfare. They're providing screening of the mechanical equipment and they've generated a noise study report. To that satisfies our concerns.
And the adjacent property owners, at least on the South Main side, are. Kind of there, that's a continuation of. Of St. Louis.
Yeah, they said it was 160 feet to the nearest house.
Right, so I would maybe, that might be useful to add.
Yeah, that makes sense to add. That's 160 feet to the nearest house.
Yep.
So that really. Makes the, my guess is whatever sound their air conditioning unit is making, the other house is going to hear their neighbors. Neighboring houses' air conditioner more than this one.
Yep.
And we've had no, no concerns from the fire marshal. Is Steve still online?
Yep.
Yes, I am.
Does the fire marshal have any concerns?
No, the only thing I'd ask of Sally, and I don't know whether it would make a difference to you guys as far as the site plan goes to to move. The tree or at least one tree out of the way on the rand place side of the arboretis to make sure there was adequate. Access to the public way.
Okay, so the fire marshal had no concerns and will work with the applicant in the building permit process?
Yes.
Okay. And does everyone agree to waive the balance of application requirements? Because what we've been presented is adequate to assess the project.
Yes.
Okay, then I think. The. Next, we had two stock conditions of approval in here. They need to get a building permit within a year and HPB needs to approve this. And it sounds like our motion is going to be to waive the balance of application requirements. And approve the site plans for the reasons discussed. So I'll go ahead and make that motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, member Katura.
Yes.
Member Loda.
Yes.
Member Shannon.
Yes.
Member Reynolds.
Yes.
Chairperson Bluestar.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, well, to the applicants, you have both your approvals from us. Thank you for all your commentary. And in being patient with us and working with us on all of our questions, so we we ask a lot of questions, but we're also reasonable. So so thank you.
Thank you very much.
So you're all set. We'll get this written up at some point. I can't guarantee when, since we don't have a secretary right now. But anyway, you have your approvals from us. Your next step would be to go to the Historic Preservation Board. And they're presumably going to look at the wall. I'll see if we can get some of our findings written up so that we can share them with with that board in case they have any concerns. But you're done with us for. For all your applications. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sally, I'll reach out to you tomorrow and we'll figure out how to process the stuff.
Thank you. That'd be great. Have a safe night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the only other thing on our agenda was meeting minutes and. None of us has read them or few of us have read them. And I think the discussion was, let's handle those another time. Steve, while you're here, do we have any new applications for next month?
Not that I'm aware of. I've been unfortunately stuck home, but I don't believe there's anything in my inbox in regards to new applications.
Nothing that's come in at this time.
Okay, so our options are to deal with minutes at our next meeting. Or hold a special meeting for it, but it sounds like we were already past our application deadline and we have no applications, so. Thoughts, anybody?
Let let's just meet at our regular time and do minutes.
Yeah, be quick.
There'll be more by then.
Yeah, there'll be more by then. I've, it's.
Right.
And now, Dorothea, you said a hire is pending, correct?
You took the steam out of my announcement. The board has a special meeting tomorrow and if things go as I hope and plan. Planning and HPV will have a new secretary that likes to do minutes and we'll have them to you in a timely manner. So just cross your fingers at noon, join in, encourage the board. Applicant is coming from local government and stepped away for a while, but she wants back, so I'm willing to let her back in. So hopefully it'll work out great. So we're very excited and. As I said, so hopefully at your next meeting, I'll be on and I'll introduce her and we'll get, you know, it'd be a good. It would be a great way to start, you know, go through the minutes and then she can meet all everybody involved.
Great.
Yeah, great news. Thank you.
Yep.
And then are you going to take a three-week vacation?
No. Village Board is quite active right now and we're going into budget, so. We're we're busy.
Well, do try to take some time off if you can get it. You've had a tough time.
Well, we'll try. I'm waiting for sunshine. No, thank you, guys. And thank you again for all your patience. And as I said, when I sent the minutes, I didn't expect approval, but I figured if you got a chance, at least I was getting you something.
Well, it's good to have them, so thank you.
Yes, if you can't sleep tonight, read them.
Yeah, thank, I want to thank the board very much for taking the late information that Sally and Casey provided and and doing. Taking care of this for the church so they can move forward.
We don't want to make that unhappy.
Okay, so with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, member Katura.
Yeah.
Member Loda.
Yes.
Member Reynolds.
Yes.
Member Shannon.
Yes.
Chairperson Bluestar.
Yes.
Motion passes and no one was a trustee.
Good job.
Bye, everyone.